How are we doing on time? We're just about there. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Michelle, hi, Audie. What can we see up there?
Why Brenna, you've changed. You're muted. I couldn't hear you.
I'm seeing it now.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of background noise from your computers. Like you got a mic on your heart or something that's going.
Gosh, I'm trying to think of what I got going. I'm having it going. I'm all. I hope it's not my other comp- I have another computer that's up, but it's not connected to the internet. Let me see what else I have. That could be doing it. Tell me if this helps, Audie. Does that help?
Yeah, it sounds a lot better.
Oh, okay. I unplugged my phone from an extension cord, so maybe, maybe. I don't know that much about electricity, so maybe it has something to do with it. Whatever. Thanks, Audie.
Electricity is alternate current or direct current?
Hello, Robert.
Hello, everyone.
Did I see Sarah? Sarah, I do see you.
Yep, there she is.
When does that bill, when will that go up for a vote?
It was just introduced in Natural Resources today, so it'll be a slow-moving bill, but the timing could be good at the beginning of fire season, so. So maybe we get lucky by the end of the season.
I mean, I wasn't quite sure. I know that those things take a long time to go through, but I wasn't sure what the timeline was, so thank you.
Is anybody drove by the Dylan shop lately?
I do regularly. Why? What's up?
They tore the whole front end, the whole east side, the parking lot is all gone to gravel now.
Oh, I, well, see, I didn't drive by at all today.
It just happened today.
Well, then, there you go.
Hello, Dawn.
How are we doing here? Oh, we still have a, we still have a minute Yes. You got it, Sarah. I'll ask people to unmute themselves and say they want to be for public comment. I know some communities do a public comment where you have to submit a piece of paper saying you want to give public comment prior to the Zoom meeting. But this seems to have been working pretty well for us so far.
Yeah, I appreciate there's not that extra step. I think I sort of went to that too, and it's pretty cumbersome in such a small town where you don't usually get a ton of public commentators.
Yeah. I didn't realize the school board was doing that.
Mayor, it's the CA and we've got 701.
Good evening, everyone. It's May 20th, 701. This is the Oak Ridge City Council, and I am calling this meeting of the City Council to order.
Is or assume a position uncomfortable for you for the Pledge of Allegiance? Brian, will you lead, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sometimes when we say the Pledge of Allegiance, it kind of gets all scrambled. Other times, for at least around my end, I can hear, hear so many individuals singing it at overlapping times, and it actually kind of chokes you up a little bit, but thanks, guys. All right, let's move on. Jackie, will you call and roll, please?
Yes. Mayor Holston. Counselor Bjornson.
Here.
Counselor Whitney.
Here.
Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Thank you, everyone. Let's see, additions, corrections over the agenda. I'm getting feedback. Do you guys?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear that.
Yes, coming from you.
And you're hard to hear sometimes.
All right, so let me, let me make an adjustment here, guys, before we go any further. How's the sound now? Does that sound better?
Okay.
Yes.
Better.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not hearing a feedback loop, so I'll keep it like that then.
I do have one addition, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
It's 10.1.6, and that's RTMP allocation. It was sent out earlier. I just want to make sure we put it in there.
You. Also, as we have agreed in the past, I'm going to move number 15 appointments up to right after eight, so nine, nine point point oh five, how's that? So that we can have our volunteer have the option of sitting through two hours or not sitting through two hours, and we'll take care of that then. So somebody remind me if I zoom past that, and I see that that she is on the line, or at least I saw it earlier, so that's good. Yes, Wanda, I see you. I see your name, Wanda. Great. All right, let's move on to public com- well, council, do you have any corrections or adjustments that you want to make?
Um, Kathy, I have you.
Oh, hey, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, it's actually more like a question I wanted, or maybe to add as a discussion for tonight. I wanted to find out an update on whether or not we're having a table at Firewise and what, what that looks like.
Okay, we will, I will definitely address that. Thank you, Dawn. All right, let's move into public comments. If you, is there anybody here?
All, all by myself at the whack, Mayor.
Okay. All right, for those that are online, then if you would like to make public comment, please unmute yourself and say your name so that I can see how many of us, of you would like to speak, and then I will go back and call on you. So Sarah, you've already indicated that you wanted to give public comment. Is there anybody else who would like to give public comment? And I'm looking and waiting to see if anybody unmutes themselves. I know sometimes that's difficult. I don't see any, though. And I see Sarah over there. Sarah, go ahead and unmute yourself when you're ready.
Hi there. Sarah Ultimus Pope, I'm the coordinator for the Southern Mountain Forest Collaborative and resident of Oak Ridge, and I have three things I wanted to mention tonight, so I'll try and do this quickly in, in my three minutes. I think everyone does know tomorrow is our Community Wildfire Safety Night. We just encourage you to come. It should be a really fun event. The weather's starting to look more promising, so hopefully won't have rain. And we're going to have a great host of partners that are going to be there to share information and some fun things, like a film to watch and, and then the fire engines. So that should be really good. Hopefully, if we don't have any more fire starts, so. Yeah, so I just wanted to mention that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions around it. I wanted to let you know, we did finalize the smoke safety plan. We were doing that in partnership with the city of Oak Ridge, and that's a great document. We're just getting that online, so that'll be available for you guys here shortly. And that's how the city, as well as all the Oak Ridge Air Partners, talk to the community about smoke across all types of smoke events. So the online outreach, the text messages, and then the press releases and how we'll do that. Have a consistent voice around that, so that's good to have that work done. And then tonight, I'm here kind of in support for Leslie now. She's a University of Oregon law student who's going to be talking to you guys about Firewise policy, and, and I worked with her earlier this year, last year, with Oregon Prescribed Fire Council, and she did some great policy analysis work for them and is continuing to work with them. So I'm here to help on any of that needed. And then I do have a similar, unrelated to all this fire stuff, but another issue that came up from my board to voice their support for the Chamber's request for TRT funding. We are a Chamber member, and we talked about it last night at the, at our board meeting. Just what great work the Chamber's been doing over the last year. Their outreach has been excellent, and their proposal to be able to have a combined community calendar, if they do get this funding, we think could be a really incredible resource. So just wanted to lend my board's support to that request. I do see a couple of questions, but I don't know if I should.
I, do you have a question of Sarah?
Yes, I, I do. Do you know anything about the forcers when they do slice burning? Do, do we have any say on that, or what, or do they just burn when they feel like?
They have to go through a bunch of hoops in order to burn, which includes consulting with a state meteorologist. So they'd get what are called burn windows. But through the smoke safety plan, we now have much better coordination on the backend. So they are talking with all the partners, ODF, El Rapa, Oak Ridge Air, the city of Oak Ridge, us. So we're helping with the outreach. So this last burn that they did a couple of weeks ago, we were able to get the message out to the community, I think, in a much more cohesive manner, coming across all platforms to expect prescribed fire and, and expect the smoke in the air, and then also telling people things they can do to protect their health when those events happen, such as staying indoors, using their air filter or air purifiers if they have them, and those type of things.
Is there anything that we can suggest in them that they do alter into burning, chipping rather than burning?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of issues with that come with that and the, you know, how that, those projects come about, but we definitely are working on what's called the biomass utilization campus, and on that front to have commercial opportunities to use that slash and to create jobs instead of burning it out in the woods. So there are regulations they have to follow to get that stuff off the ground, but if there is alternatives such as turning it into firewood or other products, that's a much better alternative. So we're, we're working on that front for sure. And definitely, Audie, we could loop you into what we call our Implementation Advisory Committee that is having those discussions monthly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Audie. Deb Borton, I saw your hand up, but I don't see it now. Did you have a public comment? Not. Yes, I see Deb's hand. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm just here in support of, you'll be talking tonight on 11.1.1 Osprey Park Disc Golf Proposal, and I just want to say I am in support of the improvements we're ready to make there if we get approved. We're adding a couple baskets, or would like to get that up to snuff for new people coming to the sport that won't have to endure the hard course out at the old mill, and this would enable us to do further training and for kids learning and adults as well. So I'm just here to say, please approve it. Thanks.
Thank you, Deb. Are there any other public comments before we move on? I don't see any. All right, so public comment is closed, and we will move on to Mayor's comments, announcements, and proclamations.
I was just, again, on my list, Green Waters Park tomorrow, 5 to 7 o'clock PM. And encourage you all of Council to please come, bring your lawn chairs, and enjoy. To answer Dawn, your question, no, it does not appear that we're going to have a table at, for the Public Safety Committee at the, or the Safety Committee at the event. We just didn't, didn't get it together. But there, there will be lots of entities there, so I think we'll have an opportunity. And Council, if you come and you choose, you know, please come and identify yourself as counselors and be there and available to help field questions and help direct people to. So thank you for those of you that'll be able to attend. I just wanted to remind everybody that the theater had their first online production last week. They will, their next one will be May 30th, so if you didn't get a chance to see that community effort, you might want to tune in on May 30th. Wanted to say thank you to, to Ubra for all the beautiful flower baskets that are now on First Street. There's all up except two, I believe. They were out there hanging, hanging them, and if you haven't seen them, please go up and take a look. And if you're so inclined, I know Mick is taking, putting together a volunteer list for individuals who would like to help participate in the process of keeping them watered. So check with him. Oh, also Johnson &amp; Johnson Vaccines. If you haven't seen that post from Orchid, they are going to be doing the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination, which is a one-dose vaccination on May 26th between 9:30 and 11:30. They do ask that you register in advance. You can register in advance by calling the phone number 782-8304. This is for 18 years and up, and it's open to both patients of Orchid and non-patients of Orchid. So you might check, check Orchid's Facebook page for more information about that. And let's do our, our bit in getting the community informed of this, of this opportunity to get a Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination, please, Council.
Time on that event?
It is 9:30 to 11:30 AM on May 26th.
And you said pre-registration is required?
Yes.
So you call 541-782-8304.
Thank you. You're welcome. All right. Let's move on to Council comments and announcement. Counselors, do you have anything that you wish to comment on or make an announcement on? Looking for hands here. Oh, Dawn, Counselor, go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Thank you. I wanted to comment or ask a question about whether or not we got a copy of the original ODOT contract for the rest area? And also, do we have an update for receiving payments of the past from ODOT on that, on that previous contract? And then my last question is, did we sell or lease another lot at the OIP recently?
I can respond to those. First, the, I already sent out the original contract that we found. It's been sent out already. I can resend it if you like. I did inquire of Jim Gamble, who's our region program manager, and he's not comfortable with the back payments. It was his predecessor that kind of worked that, and he's, he's uncomfortable with that, so I take the answer as no. However, we did just sign the, the new contract, and he agreed that we can file for this year, fiscal year '21, as well as two months later or a month later, file for fiscal year '22, so we get two, two payments in a row and, and recognize that these payments are based on reimbursable, so you, you have to show what you've spent, and then they'll match whatever you spent. So if we spent $8,000 maintaining the rest area with supplies and everything else, they would match that $8,000. Or, I'm sorry, take half of it, I guess. And they, to a maximum of $10,000, so that's the answer to that. And we do have a short-term lease that I just gave to a company, Cascadia Lumber, I believe, is the name, Tim Woolley. He needed a space to set up a portable sawmill, and he's going to sell to residents of, online and to residents of Oak Ridge, if they're interested. He told me today that he's actually interested in joining the Chamber and doing some advertising, so I think he'll be a good addition to the, to the community. But it is a short-term lease. I let him know that that lot was, is, has kind of been sort of set aside for Bonneville and their project when they do the high-power lines. So he's aware that it's a short-term thing, but he is paying a healthy rent.
So Brian, the thing that you just mentioned with Bonneville, I think that might be what I was trying to find out about. Do we have a contract with them for using a lot at the OIP right now?
No, I've been pushing them to give me a timeline of when the, I know that the whole project got slitty here, so that pushed them back a year. And so I've been, I've been pushing them to give me a timeline of when they would actually want to come on site and start storing their gear at Lot 7, and I've, it's very difficult to communicate with people in Bonneville, so they're, they're working it. I've get, they've got my question. I'm just waiting on the answer.
Okay, I guess I need to specifically ask then, do you, do we, are we aware that there's a lot over there right behind where the, where the firewood program is that's full of trucks right now?
That's Dylan's gear, the community firewood. It's the trucks he uses for his business.
Oh. Okay.
That's my understanding. I saw them today as well.
Last week, too.
Mayor, we couldn't hear that on.
Okay.
Okay. That all done?
I believe it is.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Oh. And I wasn't done, so I'll need to come back.
Audie, go ahead.
Okay, have we found anything out about the?
I'm sorry, one more time about the what?
About the gravel pit up on the hill behind Dawn's house.
TV Butte? No, I've heard nothing more.
We don't know if it passed or anything.
No, Audie, we're not in that loop. You know, that's not something that, that the city council is, is, is taking, is, is tracking, but we can certainly find out by reaching out to the TV Butte folks. And I'm happy to help you find that information, too, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Hollitt, welcome. You're here.
I've been here for a while. Sorry about that. I was a little bit late. I just had a few council meetings back. Counselor Kenyon mentioned that she, and I believe we put a motion to it about looking into our water rate increase that we applied over a year ago, and I believe we were given an explanation on what happened with that, and we discussed possibly decreasing that since it wasn't what we had planned for. And do you remember what I'm talking about, Counselor Kenyon? And I'm just wondering if there's been any movement on that.
No, there hasn't been movement, and that's on me. I have, I have the paperwork's handwritten notes that I need to transcribe and send to Brian so that, so that he can add it to an agenda. And I will get on that. My apologies.
Okay, let me know if I can help.
Okay.
I, I will tell you that I've had Eric researching what Bill Jones did when he, when we passed that, and he does have information, but it's not ready for primetime. We'll wait until we set it up on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
That the question, or do you have another one? You popped up.
I actually did have one more thing I'd like to do is request that we add to our next agenda a discussion for the Council on allocating the upcoming COVID grant money that's anticipated in June, and then again in the next budget year.
The CA, will we be ready to do that at the next meeting? Do we have the new guidelines?
We have a 150-page document we're going through. But again, the money's not here. And discussion's fine. A discussion is fine.
Will you be ready for a discussion? Because I know it's a, it's, I know it's a hefty document, and there's a lot of detail in it, and I know that on things like this, we also rely on, on our agencies higher up to help interpret them. Will you have the information you need by then to have a discussion?
A broad overview. I wouldn't call it a detailed discussion, ready to allocate, if that's what the intent was.
Okay, but a general, under Counselor Kenyon, is that, is that going to be sufficient? Because I know it's going to take time for that document to not only be translated and get answers to it, but is a broad overview what you're looking for? I, I don't want you to be frustrated if we put it on the agenda next week and then aren't able to go the direction that you would like to go with this discussion.
I would be okay if it needs to wait until the next meeting, that I just want to, I just want to make sure that the Council has time to review all the information and make a decision on allocating it prior to a supplemental budget or, and/or attached to a supplemental budgets, you know, plenty of time to make that decision.
That makes sense, too. Brian, the, the guidelines for allocating this money, is this something that is on, is digital?
Yes, I have a copy. It's, it's also on the Treasury website. And the only, only comment I'd make about, you know, allocating immediately, and I've heard this from several sources, is this money doesn't have to be allocated till 2024, and doesn't have to be spent till 2026. So I wouldn't be in a rush to spend the money. It can stay in reserve. We don't have to spend it. So I, I wouldn't, that's the only caution I would make. There's no need to rush into a spin plan. I'd rather be well-prepared, and we have to have the projects queued up properly in order to get reimbursed for it, because it'll be very specific on, it's, you know, I've heard that it's even more specific than we had expected as far as the, the projects that it can be spent on, so. I don't, I don't see us being in a position to allocate for some time. It's going to be a, a long-term thing. I think it needs to be very structured.
Well, I think this will be a good opportunity for the Council to begin to wrap their heads around, around that criteria and read it and educate themselves, because it does take time. So keeping what you just said in mind, and I appreciate that, if you would make sure that the Council has a copy or is directed to where they can read a copy of that this next week, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, Counselor Kenyon. Let's move. You're welcome, Counselor Kenyon. Let's, if there are no other comments from council, let's move on. I'm assuming that's an old hand, Counselor Kenyon, because we just talked. Yeah, there it goes. Okay. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. This is a consent agenda for approval of minutes from the May 6, 2021 meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Can I make a motion? We approve the consent agenda?
Second, this is Counselor Coker.
This was made by Counselor Whitney and seconded by Counselor Coker. And Jackie, will you call the roll, please, or call for a vote?
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hullett?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Sorry, I already did you. Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Sledoff?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Jackie. And let's move on to business from the council. 9.1 Volunteer Program and Forms. And Counselor Sledoff? Uh, let's see. Let me get to my forms here. And as we all remember, we are looking at the volunteer forms. We agreed that we would apply our, our considerable might to looking at through all of these and coming back with a plan that we could put into action on the volunteer policy and manual. Adi, I'll let you lead off if you would like to, or I will, other one, since you put it on the agenda.
Okay, go ahead. I.
Okay. So Adi had requested, excuse me, Counselor Sledoff had requested that the council address the volunteer form use while waiting for the CISHR review. When we were presented with the form, it was decided that we needed to have an accompanying volunteer policy or a program directive. And the template for both were forwarded to the council for review and editing. I actually sent to council also a, a first whack through Google Drive at putting together a policy. I hope that you looked at it so that it will give us something to begin to move forward with. And I would open this up for discussion of council. Go ahead. Do I see hands? No hands. Okay, so I would ask, so I would ask, did you get an opportunity to look at the Google Drive forms? Counsel, I'm seeing yeses. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon. I see a hand.
Thanks. I had a
You're welcome.
A bunch of notes on this, trying to get on my screen. So are we not doing the appointments first? I guess that's why I'm confused.
Sorry. We could, yes, we can do the appointments first. Thank you for reminding me. So guys, jump down to 10, whatever it is. Let's jump down to 12 or 15.
15.1.
appointments of RTMP, 15.1. So give you a chance, a chance to scroll down there. And I believe that we have, oh, let's see, I believe we have our applicant on the line. Let me get down there, committee appointment. There it is. Wanda, are you available? I'm looking for her name again. Don't see Wanda. Maybe we may have lost her. Is Colin user number one? No, obviously that's not Wanda, or she would undo herself. Okay, let's hold on. She may have dropped off.
I've still got her here, but it doesn't look like she has audio.
You know, I was, I see that she doesn't have herself muted, but I'm wondering if she's having a difficult time reaching out. Wanda? Hello? Renee, would you mute yourself, please?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. And Wanda, if you're there and trying to get on, don't worry. When you're able to get on, we will come back to you. Okay? Yeah. And see what's going on there. Okay, so everybody. Back up again then to to our volunteer program and the forms. Back to 9.1. Sorry, guys. We'll just go back up to that. So Dawn, you were about to make some comments.
Yeah, um, I have a few, and I wondered if we could, well, I guess we don't need to look through it as we go, but on the form in the beginning, it says something about, actually, I didn't see it. Yeah, right there. I'm just going to go on my screen because I can't follow it down. Somewhere in there, it, it has a thing about a person that leads the volunteer program. And gosh, I'm going to have to find it.
But on the form or in the, in the program itself, Counselor?
Sorry, I guess in the, in the volunteer policy manual. Which one are we talking about first?
We should talk about the policy manual first.
Okay, good. So in the policy manual, obviously, every place where it says into PNA, the city of Oak Ridge or something like that. But somewhere here, there's a spot that says oh, registration and application. Potential volunteers must contact link prior to performing a volunteer project or job. How do we want to fill that in? Is that?
That's a great question, and I actually am a little bit frustrated here because the, the documents that I sent out to the council were absolutely all filled in so that we could actually talk about them and see what was missing and what wasn't. And the policy was, there was a suggestion for a policy that made more sense that was crafted to make better sense for Oak Ridge. And that is, that is really what I would, I mean, I, I realize that it is, it was my interpretation of this, but I think it's a better starting point than going through and looking at the gray areas on this and trying to figure it out. So.
So in other words, you have already gone through and filled out the gray areas with what you think is
Yeah, some of it's obviously obvious, other that I made a note and said, not sure. So for example, do we have a motor pool? We don't have a motor pool. We would, we would eliminate that section. So if, if you want, I can put that up on the screen and we can take a look at that. I had hoped that we had all take, looked at that and moved through it. And then.
Mayor, to CA, it's just, to me, it would seem a better use of time to, to send it back to council and let them look at it outside the meeting instead of reviewing a document line by line.
I would agree. I would agree.
It's been with the council for two weeks.
At the next, at our next meeting, Brian, in June?
I can do that. Yes, I'll put it on the agenda. And I'll, if you, with your permission, I'll use your, your forms and not these.
Yeah. And they are available to council on Google Drive. I sent, sent all of you the link to that and then invitation to view those documents.
Oh, so. Good, then I will bypass my next 10 questions.
Too bad we can't check them off, because it feels so good when we check things off. That's awesome. Thanks, Dawn. So council, let me ask, is that, are you all in agreement with doing that? Adi, how are you? It was, this was your request.
Yes, it would be fine, please.
Thank you, Michelle. Let's move on then to the charter review. Counselor Kenyon, would you like to open this, or would you like me to? Go ahead.
I will, but please give me a second to get there on my second screen here, because I I can't read the little tiny stuff on your screen. Your voice just cut out. I didn't hear any of that.
Okay. Thank you for telling me when it does that, because I have no idea why. It's not like I get up and run around the table. When you're ready, Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
Okay, I have it up now, so. Well, I don't know if there's a recommended motion over there or not, but basically, the council needs to make a decision about whether or not the admin committee would be taking on the task of doing the charter review. And in the charter review, that would be a proposal to update the charter if we decide it's necessary. But if the admin committee would solicit and form a subcommittee of citizens to work along with us to review the current charter and decide if it needs to be updated. The council would also need to recommend the size of that subcommittee because in the document below, it is suggested between 15 and 20 registered voters. But I did, so in our packets, we got the documentation that I sent to Brian that has clips out of the National League recommendations for a charter review committee. And the admin committee would still like to take on the charter review process, including myself, if the council approves. However, the documentation that I sent you will suggest that a counselor not be involved in the charter review committee. So that's another decision that I think we need to make. The admin committee would still like to take on the charter review process, including myself, if the council approves. If the council feels that the charter review committee should be citizens only, then the council should probably schedule a work session to delineate the process that we would use to form the committee with only a little over a year, or roughly just under a year and a half to go before it needs to be on the ballot. This is something that we should get started on fairly quickly so that that process can get started. And then it, it just has below this all of the documentation that I sent over for everyone to read. And you're cutting out again.
Thank you, Counselor Kenyon. Does that sound good? Yeah. Okay. So, so the, before us then is, is two questions. The first one, I think, is do we, after reading the documentation that we have, and after thinking about it, do we prefer to form a complete charter review commission as opposed to, or do we want to leave it in the hands of the admin committee and give them direction? So be thinking about that as you respond. I would like to go around and talk to each one of the counselors or listen to hear each one of your opinions on this because it is a very important part of what we have to do as council. And, and then we'll take the next step. Adi, I'll recognize you first, and then I'll just go round robin around everybody.
Okay, as, as a counselor, wouldn't that be, and I'm asking Dawn if that would be, I, I, I don't know how you say it, but we would make, you'd be part of making the charter, and wouldn't that be something that, when it came forward, that you wouldn't be able to vote on or anything?
Oh, sorry. Generally, the rules for, like, declaring a conflict, if that's where you're going with this, only apply in situations where people are being paid for something, where counselors would be being paid for something. And that would not apply in this situation. It's generally only the budget where counselors need to declare conflict. But I do think I know what you're thinking of is that when you were on the planning commission, you had to divulge whether or not you had had expert take contact or discuss this item with other people. And that also doesn't apply to counselors. That's only the planning commission. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Dawn.
You're welcome. Oh, however, I should add, though, that that the committee, whether it's the admin committee or a citizen, a citizen-only review committee, would be developing a recommendation to send to council. And then council would, if they decided they did, well, actually, if a committee makes a recommendation to change the charter, I would assume that the council would have to do it, because that's a citizens' document.
That's exactly right, Dawn.
That's, yeah. So, so basically, though, what the council would do with it after it's been recommended is that they would go through the process to get that document placed on the ballot, and it would go to a vote of the entire city to decide if they wanted to make those changes or not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Done, Bobby?
Yes, so I just, personally, I think it should be assigned to a citizen committee and have the council choose the chair. And one of the reasons is exactly what Dawn just discussed and what Adi was alluding to was the experte contact, because I feel that if we have a counselor that is on those committees and in discussions for all of those legal things that we're going to have to vote on, that it could be considered experte contact. And an example would be if one of us attended a planning commission meeting where things were discussed, reviewed, and a decision was made on a particular item that later came to council to make a motion and vote on, then that would be considered experte contact if we had been to that planning commission meeting and have been there when all that information was discussed. So I think there could be a little bit of messiness in there or the potential for messiness. And I just, I would really like to see this done by citizens where we just have a completely different party, I don't know if it's a new party, but just someone completely separate from what we're working on, looking at it, because it's a different set of eyes, and we can hopefully encourage people to apply that have really strong skill sets towards the legality of things and legal work, and people that have maybe done this sort of thing before or been on work groups and committees or have training in this area. I just think it, I think it would be better, and I think it would be a way to hopefully pull more community members into city staff and get more people involved and more people involved that maybe have a higher, I don't know how to say this nicely, level of education and expertise and I don't know how to say this nicely, level of education and expertise, and, and can bring more skills to a lot of the things we're doing within the city. So I, I, I just, I see it on all the different levels of it. I just see the experte contact being an issue. And, you know, and if we have an outside committee working on it, I think that really just helps keep it to the meat of it, and really, people are just looking at it. And, and, you know, there could be that we provide some direction on, you know, the things that we've seen, and a list of the things that we have identified as being an issue. But I would really, really like to see it be assigned to a citizen committee. And I'm done.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Counselor Hollitt, go ahead, please.
Excuse me, I mostly disagree with that, what Counselor Whitney said. I do not think expat, expat, experte contact has anything to do with this at all. And I do think that Counselor Kenyon has a really good skillset that would be very valuable in helping with this. And even if it wasn't Counselor Kenyon, I am totally comfortable with one counselor being involved. If it were the entire council, now, of course, that wouldn't seem right. I, the way this was explained to me prior to today, what I, what I thought was going on was that this was going to be a charter review committee within the admin committee. And I could be off on that, but that was my understanding, and I felt that they were going to allow more people to apply, to be involved in it. And I, I do like that. I think that it will get done if it's under the admin committee. I think that it's important that this be done in a timely manner, and it's, it's a long process. I also think that sometimes having a counselor on there might be a good idea just to bring up thoughts or concerns because the average citizen, you know, just doesn't understand possibly the flow of council and how all the laws work, Robert rules, and just all that stuff. So it does not bother me in the least having a counselor on there. And I do like it being under the admin committee. Like I said, I think it'll, I think it'll be done in a timely manner, and also the meetings, I'm assuming, will be open to the public. And I would hope that, you know, I, looking at that number there of twenty people on the committee, that seems extremely high. I think it would be really hard, you know, to get ten people to be on the charter committee, but if there were ten people that wanted to be on it, that would be great. So I think allowing the admin committee to pull in some more people to work on the charter would be, would be good. So my direction personally would be that I would like to keep it under the admin committee with the counselor involved in it.
Thank you, Counselor Hollitt. We are going to go around with, to all of the other counselors. But before we do that, I am going to read from here so that it helps, helps inform us about what this charter review manual does recommend, and so that we can address that a little bit too. So this, there is two paragraphs that I want to read. So when the commission is composed of, can you, and can you hear me? Audi, can you hear me? Okay? Okay. When the commission is composed of community residents who are not involved in day-to-day governmental operations, the commission is able to be detached, objective, and impartial. The most effective charter commissions are not dominated by lawyers or scholars and accountants, but made up of civic-minded, intelligent laypeople with a common sense approach to things. The members should be A, in touch with the perspectives present in the community; B, command respect from the local residents; and C, bolster the confidence of citizens in the process and the work of the commission. Special mention should be made about the role of local elected officials. While in many cases, the mayor and/or council plays a role in the appointment of commission members, the involvement of elected officials should end at that point. The charter process functions best when it is rooted in citizen involvement rather than one influenced intentionally or unintentionally by political officials directly serving as members. In some cases, the commission's recommendations go back to the council, which has the authority to decide whether the proposal will go to the people for a vote or may determine the final language of proposals. Still, the commission should do its work independently and give the council and the voters its best thinking about charter changes. Now, I read those two just to help everyone give you some meat about what it is that we are trying to decide. And in addition, I, well, not in addition, so now let me go through. So Chrissy, Bobby, Dawn, I'm looking at everybody here. Michelle, may I hear your thoughts on this?
Okay, so I have a question to start off, so I can understand this a little bit better. Are we talking about putting citizens in with the admin committee in order to resolve the charter issue? Or are we talking about the admin committee doing it with citizen input?
We are first talking about whether or not this should be a function and subset of the admin committee, or this should be a separate charter commission.
Okay, okay, thank you, Kathy. I personally think a separate citizen committee would be better. I think we would get a better overview from different people rather than all of us that are currently here. I don't know, I'm kind of torn. I mean, I think, I definitely think a counselor should be on, and Dawn would be a great one. Dawn's very, very intelligent with, you know, everything. But I still think a separate board would be better.
Yeah, first of all, can I ask, who all is on the admin committee currently? Who is it made up of? I'm sorry.
Counselor Kenyon, can you answer that?
Yes, it's myself. I'm the chair of the committee. And then I have three citizens currently on, which is Amy Kelly, Trudy Hammond, and Jerry Reed. And we have, I think, four more, or three more, three more seats open on our committee. But I wanted to know, Mayor, if I could also interject something really quick, just so it's really clear. The the thing that I think we are needing to look at is whether or not to form a citizen-only committee, or if it stays with the admin committee, the admin committee would also add a subcommittee of more citizens that are just there specifically for working on that project, not becoming permanent members of the admin committee.
That's what I was hoping for.
All right, let, let's, so the, the question before us is whether we have a charter commission of separate, or we have a committee that is under the admin committee. That's pretty simple. Which way do we all look at it?
Thank you.
Melissa, do you have more to say? You had a question.
Yeah, since admin committee is mostly made up of citizens anyways, that would be basically the foundation of the subset of the committee, or would everybody on the admin committee start? It's a little bit confusing to me.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. So in essence, what would happen is the admin committee would be in charge of putting together a subcommittee. That would, each of the members of the admin committee, if you went that direction, could choose to be part of the subcommittee in addition to additional citizens who would be either invited to be part of the committee or apply. And that's a question we would have to determine as to whether we make open applications or we make invitations. And there is a plus and, pros and cons to both of those.
Yes.
So does that make more sense, Melissa? Do you want me to come back to you?
No, sorry, I just got muted, and I, it wasn't my I personally think that under the admin committee would be fine. It's not being led by council as a whole. It's not being influenced by council as a whole. I think admin committee to oversee it and give them, not necessarily direction, but cohesiveness, an outline. I don't know, I, I don't know how it would look to just form a citizen-only committee without a starting point. I don't know that I like the idea of council being the ones that decide how it's made up either. I think that gives council a lot of sway over who sits on that committee. I think if it was admin committee, since it's already mostly citizens, would probably be better served that direction anyways. Yeah, that's my thoughts.
Hold on, who have? Have I called, have I called on everybody once? I've lost track, guys.
You have not called on.
Go ahead.
What I'm wanting to find out is are, we only have, how many you said on the admin committee right now, Dawn?
There's a total of four people right now.
Four people, and we can't get anybody to go on that. So i- if we form, try to form another committee outside of that, what's our chances? Because we're not filling all of our positions on all of our committees now either. So bang, we're shooting ourselves in the head, you know? So we need somewhere to start, and how long we got to get this going? By voting season, November, or is it September?
Well, we would, we would want to have something on the ballot, on a November ballot. And it would be November of next year.
Next year, okay. So, you know, okay. Because it's, as you see now, I mean, you can go through all the committees we've got, and it's hard to fill the committees that we have. And I don't know, this may be a subject that more of our citizens want to get involved in, and yet it may not. And so if we tried to go to just citizens only, we may not have a charter review. And so, you know, I don't know how we may be shooting ourselves in the foot. I don't, you know, I don't know. That's, that's, but I'm, I'm a little worried that, you know, I, I know Dawn is very well up on everything, and, and I, I wouldn't think that she would try to influence anybody. I think that she would give him direction, and I'm very confident in that. And I don't think that she would give them direction to benefit the council or her. So, that's on it.
Okay, so let me interject just a little bit here. So having read what I did, I will say that I am entirely in agreement with putting together a separate charter commission of citizens who have indicated their interest and then are vetted by council or another council committee, or another citizen committee. Changing the chart, looking at, at oddities that we need to correct and update, and that we know of a few already off the top of our heads, we can roll them off. But doing anything to our charter is always a very, very slow and, and time-consuming process. The League of Oregon Cities will guide us through that process. It is very important, in my opinion, that this be, because the charter was originally written by citizens, not by counselors, not sat with counselors. It was written by citizens. But this be a citizen document again. That is not to say that we, that we can't use a very, a different form. But I want to, I want to really impress my feeling that we do not have to have, nor should we have, a counselor on this committee. It needs to be separate. Our charter needs to be done by our citizens. And it will take a little bit of time to put that commission together. Because it's, it will, we'll have to make some decisions. Yes, we're starting from scratch, but that's not a bad thing. Audi, you made, in my opinion, a really good point. We have a difficult time getting citizens on our committees right now. This is entirely different than a council committee. And there are many citizens in our community that I, that are very reticent to be on a council committee, but are very, very interested in making sure that our charter is up to date and would be probably willing to serve on that. This isn't a referendum on, on Counselor Kenyon's, or Counselor Hollitt's, or my qualifications at all. And in fact, in some communities that I know of personally, when the charter review came around, it counselors who felt strong about wanting to be a part of that because it was something near and dear to their heart, resigned from council in order to be on the charter commission. I don't say that as a suggestion. I say that as an example of how important it is that the charter review commission be separate from council. So that's my thoughts, and you can read in this document why the League of Oregon Cities believes that so strong, why the Oregon Mayors Association agrees with that also, and while the National League of Cities also agrees with that. So, so I see hands. I'm assuming all of these are new hands, so I'm going to go down the road. Oh. Bobby?
I could have the opportunity to speak on this prior to moving on to someone else.
All right, be fine. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First of all, I want to say that I wholeheartedly agree that it should be a citizen committee, a citizen-only committee. When I was a citizen, it was something that I wanted to do on my own without counsel. As a matter of fact, I don't know if you remember, Kathy, but I approached you quite a few years ago, and you said, well, hold off. This is something that the council might be needing to participate in, and so I held off, but and then, of course, I became a counselor. So I was kind of excited when it seemed like when you I don't remember how it came up, but in one of our meetings about a year ago, maybe it wasn't that long ago, but anyway, you had tasked the, or the council tasked the admin committee to look at doing a charter review. And so I kind of got excited thinking, well, oh my gosh, if this is something that we, that I can still participate in as a counselor, that would just be thrilling to me because it is something that I want to participate in and, and see that, you know, processes are being followed. That whole book is full of, you know, detailed, step-by-step, this is how you do a charter review. And I'm, I would love it. But that aside, I'm actually advocating today for my admin committee, who, we had this discussion in all the, the three other members on the committee said that if this was tasked to the admin committee, to, you know, to form a subcommittee, that they actually would not want to take on the project without me. And I'm, I'm speaking for it right now. I'm not, I'm not trying to just boost, you know, my own ego, but they would prefer that we just go back to doing regular admin committee business. they would prefer that we just go back to doing regular admin committee business than to go on and try and manage something like this on their own. So I'm just giving the council that information. And I think that's probably all I have to say. And I think that I'm, I'm okay either way. If this goes to admin, I'll do it. If it doesn't go to admin, I'm for.
I would hand you Kleenex because I think we'll both cry a little bit if we don't have any fingers in it because it's one of the things that is near and dear to me too. But okay, so I'm going to go back through the list of people with their hands up. I will say that it is eight oh five and we do have a full agenda. So we need to, we need to get, get moving on if we're going to accomplish some of the things that we absolutely have to get to. I did get a message from our, from Wanda and her Zoom was just not being good. So she ended up having to leave. I'll see if I can't reach out to her and see if we can get her on the phone a little bit later. So Bobby, go ahead, please.
Yes. So when you spoke earlier Kathy, everything you said was what I had my hand raised for. I think it's important to take the recommendations that come from higher level entities. Because there's experience behind those recommendations and I'm sure there's reasons and examples in. Hopefully Dawn didn't take my comments negatively because they were in no way meant in any negative way towards her at all. And I have to say, this sort of thing has always been kind of my wheelhouse. And I had looked forward to maybe possibly participating as well. Because I really enjoy this and it's something I've done in a past job. So it's something that gets me excited and I enjoy it. So I really understand how you're feeling, but I really would like to see it go off and be be a separate committee that's made up of citizens, separate from us. I think it's keeping it as a citizen committee is very important and keeping with tradition. And then also acknowledging all the recommendations that come from the other entities. So I'm really advocating to assign it to a citizen committee. And I really don't see a reason why we couldn't reach out and to people that we know that have expertise in this that can maybe help with this committee. And I know Dawn, you just said that the other three admin committee members wouldn't want to participate if you weren't there. But maybe they, if you ask them, maybe they would. I just, I see no reason why they couldn't be a part of a bigger work group if that's what they choose to do. But those, that's all I have to say.
Maybe I should clarify. You know, on their own, outside of the admin committee, they might be people who would choose to participate in a charter commission. But I, I think what they mean to say is that as the admin committee, they wouldn't want to be doing a project without their chair.
Ah, gotcha. I, I just understood it a different way.
Jack here. So we're getting into details that we need to, we need to hold off on and actually deal with.
Mm hmm.
How we're gonna.
Okay. I, I was done though. And I'm glad she clarified because I did understand it a different way. So, thank you, Dawn.
Counselor Hollit, your hand is up.
Thank you. I feel almost like we're all saying the same thing, but reiterating it different ways. But even listening after everybody, I still feel very strongly that I would like to see the charter review committee under the admin committee. And after listening to everybody, they're still consisting of citizens. It's not, you know, all the counselors or all the city staff or whomever, it's citizens that would be a subcommittee under the admin. And another point I want to bring up is, to my recollection, isn't the counselor doesn't vote on issues? They basically run the meeting and there is only a vote if there's a tie. That's, that's my recollection for committees that we did a while ago. So Counselor Kenyon, I don't think would be voting. But if she were, I don't see a reason why we couldn't make the subcommittee under the admin of citizens. You know, not have the counselor vote or something like that. But I just, I still feel really strongly that Dawn would be really great on that. And I really like the idea of a subcommittee under the admin.
I, I'm going to remind us that we are not talking about whether Dawn is qualified to be in this position. We need to determine how we want to form these committees, not who is going to be on them. And Dawn, I hope you sleep well tonight because you're getting lots of wonderful kudos. So do you feel that love? That's good.
Well, my bottom line is I'm saying that I think that the citizen review committee makes sense to be under admin because it still consists of citizens.
Counselor Bjornson, I see your hand.
Thank you. So after you reading that, and I did skim through it myself, but you read it into the record basically. And what I'm not understanding is if it's to be a citizen only committee and you sounded very passionate about that and Bobby as well. Why, why do you also say that then council should be vetting or inviting people into the committee? If it shouldn't, if council should not have any influence over it, then council should not have any influence over it. It should solely be a citizens committee. You can't have it both ways. I personally think it would do well under the admin committee, Dawn or not, whoever the counselors on the admin committee. But it should be a citizens committee without council oversight. If we're going that direction, I don't think that we should be vetting or inviting or doing any of that. I think citizens should take this on and they should not be being directed by us on how, when, or, or what way they should go with it. We can give them resources like League of Oregon Cities and things like that to help them. But I don't think we should be vetting them or choosing members if that's the way we're going to go.
Clarify, Melissa. I am not saying that council will choose the individuals. A council, the council can decide how we want to put together the committee. And then we can decide how we want how that, how that gets put together. I also don't believe that we should do it, but you do recognize that if it's a subcommittee of admin, they have to be approved by council. So that's why you have a separate commission. You have, and we can, we can do it any way we want. I mean, we can decide not to do what is recommended and do it a way that fits us better. We have that prerogative. But Counselor Bjornson, I am not trying to say that council should be appointing people. It is very common for charter commissions to take the recommendation of citizens as well as counselors about inviting people to be on the commission. That is one way to do it. Very rarely is it anybody who signs up. Sometimes it is, please apply. This is if you have an interest, please apply. And then a group is formed to review the applications and assign them to the committee or not. There has to be some vetting and vetting isn't a bad word. Just because if it's an open invite, you can't, you have to have a limit of numbers. And you want to have a, you want to make sure that your committee is a broad representation of your community. That's just the way it goes. And really in all of this, we are not experts in this in any way, shape or form. But we can and will rely on both LCAG, the Lane Council of Governments, who are more than willing to come in and help us and guide us through the process, as well as the League of Oregon Cities, who are more than willing, and they do this frequently for cities throughout Oregon, come in and help them with the process of revising their charter. They have a whole, a whole set of meetings around that and have done that and do it frequently for cities. So please don't think that I'm trying to say we need to appoint people and we'll decide who to do it. That's not at all what I'm saying. But we do have lots of resources out there to craft any way we want to do it. And we can go to the league also and say, we're not really comfortable with this. Can you help us form a way and a process for doing a charter review that involves our admin committee or doesn't involve our admin committee? So we, we have lots of options here. All right, so at this point, I need to flip through my paperwork to find where I am here. And, um, wrong computer, try to review. Okay, so there is no recommended motion here. But I think personally, I'm willing to let you all delve on this, but if you don't want to and there is a motion, I am more than happy to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right, please go ahead.
I move that we form a charter review committee as a subcommittee under the admin committee.
I'll second that.
Hold on, hold on, got it. Okay. So the motion is to form a charter review committee under the admin committee as a subcommittee.
Correct.
Discussion, please.
Um, I actually had one more thing I wanted to say that I forgot earlier. We have discussed charter review and the committees discussed charter review for years. I know right before I became a counselor, I believe it was in December and it was maybe actually November. And it was Counselor James Affa who asked that the council at that time form a charter review committee. And the council agreed that they would start a charter review committee. And during that time, it has been brought up a couple of times and it has never happened. Nothing has happened on it. There has been no charter review committee until now. And so another reason why I feel strongly about it happening under the admin committee is that I think it will actually have progress and get done. And I, I do appreciate all those resources that the mayor brought up. They are important players that can help out. But they can help out any committee. And I know that, that they will definitely help the admin committee in that. I think that's all I have.
I'm sorry. Is there any other further discussion? Okay, I would be remiss if I didn't say that I disagree with this process. I don't disagree with the charter review. We absolutely have, have to have it done. I, we have been wanting to do this for some time. And obviously, you know, I have spoken of this in both messages in January that I gave to the community that this was important and that we would get done. So let's hope that that can happen. We will rely on our resources. As this motion stands, you have a charter review committee that is going to be under the, under the admin committee as a subcommittee. So I would hope that in, within that motion, that the admin committee would then come back and explain how they're going to form a subcommittee and who is going to be on it and who is going to choose it.
And that there will be more openings.
Yes. And how many openings and the proposal for all that. I, I think that would be part of that. And I see Dawn's head nodding. So I would, I would trust that that is the direction it would go. So that's all I have to say. And is there any other counselor that has any comment? No, I don't see any hands popping up. Jackie, please call for a vote.
Counselor Whitney?
Nay.
Counselor. Counselor Bjornson? Counselor Hollit?
Aye.
Counselor Coker? Mayor Holston? I'm sorry, what? Thank you. Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
That passes four to three. Thank you, council, for that lively discussion. And let's move on. There we go. Get back to the agenda here. So we're going to move into the business of city administrator. Brian, you are on deck.
I'm in a triage here, given the time. And we've got a guest speaker, so I'm going to skip my update and go to her, Leslie. A very important topic of fire safety and how it relates to our nuisance ordinance. So Leslie, if you're still on, please come up and let's get started.
I am.
And I made you a co-host.
Yeah, I'm still here. And do I have the ability? Perfect. Okay. So I think the, whoever's got their screen up now needs to drop that. And then I can start mine. All right. Do you all see just my PowerPoint? No notes, no nothing?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Good. I did it right. All right. Feel free to interrupt me at any point if you'd like, but we can save all the questions till later. That might go a little faster. All right. So my name is Leslie New. I'm a University of Oregon law student and wildland firefighter here in Oregon. And this past year, I researched how local governments can use their municipal laws to reduce the risk of wildfire. And I specifically looked at how communities have used their public nuisance laws to require and enforce abatement of hazardous vegetation around private properties. And I chose to apply my research findings to a courtesy review of the City of Oak Ridge's nuisance code. And for my presentation today, I'll go over the objectives of using a nuisance code for wildfire risk reduction, provide some example code language from other Western communities, and finally go over the current status of Oak Ridge's code and provide some suggestions for revisions and potential strategies for future support and implementation of the code. So overall, the objective of using a public nuisance codes for wildfire risk reduction is to improve citizen safety. Much of the properties in Oak Ridge exist in the Wildland Urban Interface or the WUI, which is the area where human infrastructure meets or intermingles with undeveloped wildlands and vegetation. And living in the WUI and among the trees is much of the appeal of living in Oak Ridge in that area. Unfortunately, this has also caused that area or the area around Oak Ridge to be classified as a moderate to high level of risk to wildfire. And sadly, as we saw last year with the Holiday Farm Fire, many rural communities in Western Oregon are only a dry season, a spark and a wind gust away from a community altering wildfire event. So with this wildfire risk in mind and the community values at stake, many Western municipalities have used their public nuisance codes to mitigate wildfire risk. And a public nuisance is an action or thing that has the potential to cause harm to a whole community in general. And some municipalities in fire prone areas have chosen to declare certain wildfire hazard conditions of public nuisance. For example, following the deadliest wildfire in California's history, the town of Paradise, California adopted a new code chapter entitled defensible space and hazardous fuel management. The chapter declares that the uncontrolled growth and accumulation of hazardous vegetation and combustible materials within city limits is dangerous and a public nuisance. The chapter states that property owners so continuously maintain a fire break around their structures and shall not permit combustible materials to grow within 30 feet of their property lines. This ordinance authorizes fire chief, to fire chiefs to inspect properties and to allow the town to use the abatement procedures to require property owners to mitigate public nuisance either voluntarily or to be charged for the abatement by town officials. So these provisions are very typical of most hazardous vegetation nuisance chapters. And a unique feature though, in Paradise's chapter, is that it actually has the inclusion of a provision that requires that when a property is sold, the buyer must sign and agree to the terms of this defensible space and hazardous fuel management chapter upon transfer of the property. For hazardous vegetation chapter in Bend, they also For hazardous vegetation chapter in Bend, they also have those typical provisions seen in Paradise. But in Ben's code, it also includes a provision that provides guidance on how the reduction might be done, such as through trimming, cutting materials, or the application of EPA improved herbicide. Another unique feature in Ben's code is that it actually has two sets of requirements. One for smaller lots, less than a half acre, and one for larger lots, greater than a half acre. And for smaller lots, the code requires all flammable vegetation to be removed. And for larger lots, the code requires twenty foot fuel break around structures, property lines, and any other vulnerable improvements such as power poles or vehicles. And another example of a community specific feature of a nuisance code is in Ashland, which promulgated a city council approved list of prohibited flammable plants that were not to be planted within city limits. And then it also had, requires the cutback of weeds as the, as defined city code and the cutback of noxious vegetation as defined by Oregon Department of Agriculture's Plant Division. Um, so it also provides residents with a specific timeline for the required cutback of these plants. And then that the cutting back of materials should will continue throughout the summer season. So an important commonality in these three examples is that the hazardous fuel abatement requirements were all listed underneath a central code chapter that was titled and related specifically to flammable vegetation mitigation. So using these examples from other communities, let's take a look at what Oak Ridge's nuisance code currently looks like as it pertains to flammable vegetation. So the applicable language exists under nuisance chapter ninety-three within the noxious growth sections of code, which states that vegetation, which is a fire hazard, is considered a noxious growth and declares noxious growth to be a nuisance that, and that no owner shall allow nuisance growth, or sorry, no owner shall allow noxious growth to be, uh, on their property and shall be required to abate these grows while being jointly and severally liable for the costs of such abatement. So those are those two statements in the code right there. And after having these statements in there, it then switches to a, to, um, to requirements surrounding electrical transmission lines. Um, and then the code spends the rest of the page describing these transmission line requirements until on the next page, finally going back to requirements in the code for private property owners and addressing the required clearance of vegetation around buildings such as. Yes.
Did someone?
I think so, Leslie, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I thought I heard you. All right, um, so, so it switches back to describing the requirements for private property owners. Um, and some of those requirements that you all have in your codes is the maintenance of effective fire breaks, removal of overhanging trees above chimneys, clearance of debris from roofs and roadways. And then the last page describes your notice and abatement procedures with specific timelines for, timelines for addressing the non-compliance, the costs associated with the failure to comply and having the city do the abatement. So overall, the chapter contains many useful provisions about what residents are required to do to mitigate hazardous fuels. However, these provisions are spread across four different pages and are separated by sections defining requirements unrelated to private property owners. So using these examples from other places and, uh, using those lessons learned, I've outlined three proposals that Oak Ridge could consider for improving and supporting the noxious vegetation requirements in the code. So first would be a revision of the language and organization of the noxious growth section of the nuisance code. So to provide citizens better guidance, clarity, and intent in creating defensible space and mitigating hazardous fuels around their private properties. And in doing this, the second proposal would be to implement simple but broad reaching strategies for educating residents about the requirements under the code. And then lastly, the third proposal would be exploring ways to support or funding strategies for assisting private property owners to comply with the nuisance provisions in the code. So turning to the first proposal, a revision of the noxious growth chapter could consolidate the code, um, for requirements for private property owners into one specifically titled code chapter for hazardous fuel mitigation. Um, I kind of outlined here a possible, um, hazardous vegetation chapter with the consolidated requirements for property owners. So the first section would, could describe the, just very clearly describe the purpose of the nuisance chapter for the protection of health, safety, and property. Next would be a section defining what specific plants were considered weeds or flammable or noxious growths under Oak Ridge's code. And the third section would clearly declare that these specific types of hazardous vegetation would be a nuisance in a certain situation or a certain, in certain environment. And it could provide possible exemptions either within that same code or outside of it for times when, when the abatement of these, of these vegetations would be impractical based on, say, a fire official's determination. And the next one would be the most, probably the most important is clearly to find the responsibilities of prob, of real property owners. So whether that be to maintain fire break, not to plant certain plants, or to cut back weeds by a certain date. And under this section or as a separate section could be possible guidance on how this removal could be done, like trimming or herbicide or cutting back weeds. Um, and lastly, the last few sections would be the authority to inspect for either fire or city officials, a violation penalties if there are to be any fines associated with it, and then the notice and abatement procedures, uh, by the owner or the city. And these last sections would likely be based on your current procedures with revisions made based on advice and experience from current enforcement officials. So with these revisions, the second proposal would be to support them through a communication and education strategies. And these communication and education strategies could also be used for how the code currently stands also. And it could be done through various web or written based strategies. So for web based strategies, Oak Ridge could use some methods seen in other municipalities, such as the creation of a community wildfire safety page that includes web links to actual code language. Um, with the list of prohibited hazardous plants with photos, printable defensible space diagrams. Or, um, Santa Rosa, California has on their webpage a frequently asked questions section with information. And then, um, contact information for various ways to submit code compliance complaint forms. And many municipalities have quick and easy online complaint forms on their website. Uh, social medias are really important and were really useful web based tool also for communicating, educating residents. For example, in Bend, um, it has used their city's Facebook page to inform residents of the importance of defensible space. And, um, it actually states in the post that the city code requires this and then provides a link for more information and how to access those complaint forms. Another idea for using Facebook could be doing a code of the month campaign where, uh, it would feature the vegetation nuisance codes at the beginning of fire season, probably right about now, with photos and diagrams and web links for public to check out and look at right before fire season. Um, and for print media option, the city could consider including informational handouts and with the code language and defensible space requirements in new homeowners packets or a one pager in the monthly water bill or leaving some at city hall or other frequented locations in Oak Ridge. And finally, after revising the code and educating residents about their obligations, the last proposal would be for Oak Ridge to explore various funding or support, um, strategies for assisting residents. And these strategies, these support strategies include financial and non-financial methods to encourage compliance. So for example, um, some support, support strategies could be, um, including like the, the Bend City Fire, uh, Department provides free home consultations to homeowners to prepare their homes for wildfire. Or in Truckee, California, they require defensible space inspections to be conducted prior to the sale of real property and then reimburses residents the cost of renting a large six yard green waste dumpster. So it encourages multiple property owners to get together and create defensible space on their properties. And it could invest, um, investigate some sources of funding that could be acquired either by the city or by private residents. And I believe there's already been quite a bit of work done, um, in this forefront too. But there could be, uh, funding sources from ODF, WUI, or Firewise Grants, or maybe even some federal programs. And there could be possibility of exploring ways of viewing revenue generated from code violation fines to help support other strategies such as the in-statement and support of the chipper program. So overall, in conclusion, these proposals are only suggestions but are based on some examples of other communities that have worked to reduce their risk of wildfire. If Oak Ridge decides to revise its nuisance code, it should think about borrowing language and provisions from these other examples and work with the goal of providing clarity in the code for its residents. It was also important to consider the capacity for enforcement and penalties and the various doable strategies for educating the public and how it might support compliance through financial and non-financial means. Um, changing the nuisance code is not necessarily a fail safe for preventing wildfire damage, but requiring vegetation management is an easy to, and an easy to understand code format will help the residents comply with standards and create a line of defense against a future wildfire event. So I really appreciate the opportunity to, uh, speak with you all. And if you have any questions, this would be the time.
Thank you, Leslie. I, I really appreciate, uh, what you, what you had to say. Um, and spending the time to come and talk to us. Um, I see a couple of counselors who have questions. Um, Counselor Sleetoff, would you like to go first? You're muted, Audie.
With that mitigation process, uh, down here on Teller Road, we kind of live on a flat land and there's a hill up behind us and then goes to the property above. It's quite a ways in there. The, my understanding is that the, all the people above own or down to the bottom of the hill. But none of that, I've been to the city before and they said that that was there to keep ground control. But it is just a, a map blackberry forest and weeds all the way across there, so that's a. Is that something that's there or what? Is that, is that something that we need to control or not? Because it's within the city.
I think that would fall underneath our codes, Audie. And I think that is kind of, at least from what Leslie is saying here, is that all of our, our codes need to be applied across the board. And e- even in that specific situation that you're thinking of, that immediately pops to mind. And I think the rule of thumb, if you have something that pops to mind immediately, it's probably a hazard. And, uh, I appreciate, um, I, I appreciate that that might be something we need to specifically address, even if it's land that isn't adjacent to your home. But you own it, right?
Right, and, and it's, what it is, is I, I went to the city before, our last mayor, Louie, and talked to him about it and he said, no, we're not going to do anything about it because that's a kind of a no man's land and it helps the erosion from the earth from eroding down onto the lower properties. And so they said they wasn't going to do anything, but it's a, it's a big fire all the way across the top of the hill from West Second Clear to, uh, Mount Union.
I don't think Leslie's expertise is in telling us what the, what, what specific areas need to have what done to it, but that's a good example of, of some of the, the, the difficulties that we will run into throughout us because we're on a hillside everywhere. Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
Um, first of all, I wanted to clarify, um, is, is going through this process like you described with looking at our ordinances and whatnot, is that something that you're proposing to do? For us?
Good answer.
The last.
Um, that, that's, that's what I did with this project. Um, I wanted to look at how, yeah, yeah. So I, I went through, um, what was your current, pretty much did a compare and contrast of what Oak Ridge's code looks like compared to other cities that have done this. Um, and so look through it and then just, these are those suggestions of, well, if you wanted to, if you wanted to revise it, here are some ways that you could make it more, more, more citizen and user friendly.
Okay, so in other words, our next step would be actually, um, revising our ordinances to go by the recommendations that you're making.
Okay, that could be a possible step, yes.
Okay, well, I just wanted to really get clarification of what, uh, you know, I love the presentation. I wholeheartedly agree with all of it. I just wanted to know, um, if there's a decision that needs to be made here today or if this was simply a presentation.
Simply a presentation, but, but good food for thought for decisions in the future possibly.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Um, well, might be the only time you'll ever get this question, but I'm wondering, um, is there any examples of, of an area that was hit by wildfire that because they had all followed codes and kept the, the growth away from their homes and whatnot, that it actually saved a town or an area from burning? Do you know if, if such information, oh, okay, Sarah knows.
I, I, I think Sarah might have a specific example on her mind.
Yeah, I'm realizing I should have helped a little bit more of a frame up to explain why I kind of recruited Leslie in to do this work. So maybe I'll back up a few steps and do that for you guys. Um, but, uh, we get questions as the Forest Collaborative oftentimes from citizens saying, what, can I grow here? What, what are the codes? What are the rules? And so I refer people to the city website and it is confusing, so I knew that was a problem. So when Leslie was looking at policy issues around, um, wildfire and communities and prescribed fire, uh, I just mentioned like, hey, I think we need some code revision and, and a hard look at what we have here in Oak Ridge if you want to do a bit of applied project. So she did comb through it and we do have things on the books that work as code that can help for Firewise and help, um, recommend people what to do, but it's hard to interpret. Um, and it's hard to, um, to use that as an effective enforcement tool. Um, so there's just better options out there with, with what other communities are doing. And there has definitely been success stories in Colorado and in California where communities have gotten on this. And, um, and it's tough decisions for you as counsel to make because if you put rules around what people can grow on their property, how high their vegetation can be, how close to their home, how close to boundaries. You know this, people don't like rules, but at the same time, there's a balance that has to be made with fire, with safety for the community. So that's really kind of what Leslie's done and she, she didn't mention, but she has an excellent report that she wrote too that has this all in depth. And even, um, the examples in that report too, so that's more food for thought. So I think this is just an introduction for you to counsel to think about, uh, if you want to take this on and how in depth you want to get on it or get into it, um, with some revisions. But as, uh, a partner that's helping, uh, with Firewise and working with agency partners on, on getting funding, it, I think it would be really helpful if our code reinforced the need for people to take personal responsibility on their property to do what is needed around fuels reduction. And that would help, uh, I think us when we come to them with grant opportunities, with match funding opportunities to incentivize them to want to work with the agencies and to take that initiative. So, um, that's part of why, uh, we pulled Leslie in and, um, and I just really appreciate the, the presentation, Leslie. It, it helps really clarify for us because I had never had the chance to do the deep dive on it either, but, um, kind of where the confusion with community members is coming from. And so, yeah, that's just thought for, or food for thought for you as counsel on this is an issue, steps you could take. And then that balancing act that you need to decide on how much, how many more, uh, codes and rules to make and the ability to enforce those and how to, um, get people to comply. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Sarah. And then my very last thing might be for Brian. I'm wondering if, um, council does decide to pursue changing the way our ordinances look. Is that something that we go to planning commission or is that a council, a council, uh, decision?
I, I would guess.
I think it's land use, isn't it?
Uh, it depends on how in-depth.
It depends on how in depth, but if it's just, you know, kind of rearranging the existing ordinances primarily and then adding some stiffer language. It's real not, it's not really a planning commission, but we would have to go through the lawyer, of course, to make sure it's suitable.
Thank you. That's all I have. And thank you so much, Leslie, for everything that you've done. I think you made an excellent presentation for us today.
Halle, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Leslie. That was awesome. Um, I, if it was up to me, I would say most of this stuff, we just need to put our stamp of approval on it and do it. But I know it takes a little bit of work, but just from my experience, I just want to say to the rest of the council, from what I see, this is like really spot on and something that would be such a huge prevention method for our whole for our city. And also I think it might even help our, you know, our law enforcement that's working on code enforcement by us doing this. It's going to help our employees do their job better and keep citizens safe. So thank you so much, Leslie. It was really awesome. I'm so happy to see that.
Counselor Spleedoff, go ahead.
Yes. Leslie, Sarah mentioned that you had done the extensive research and have written up some papers. Is there any way that council could get a hold of those? So we could look at that and take them under advisement?
For sure. I can send off both the PowerPoint and the report that I wrote and that can get distributed to you all.
Thank you. That would be a great talk.
Counselor Whitney, go ahead.
I just have to say I really agree with Counselor Hollitt's comment. And and I agree with just wanting to put a stamp of approval on it. I think that was a great thing to say because it's very spot on. I was just kind of curious. I'm trying to figure out where we go from here. I I don't know, but I was just kind of looking for more information on what would be the most appropriate next step because I was thinking planning commission, but this is so well done. I don't know if we need that. So what what would we do if it doesn't go to planning commission? What would be the next thing to do?
Asking?
Yeah, I'm asking.
The next thing that we can do is put it on a future agenda because there are some things we have to parse out as far as and discuss, such as, do we have the capacity? How can we set up something that can assist people in doing this? That's one, but I think just changing the language is important, giving the tools, like I think Chrissy, you said, giving the tools to our law enforcement to continue to do code enforcement that it has some meat behind it and then discussing how as a community we can assist people when they do get as a community, how do we do this together so that it doesn't come down on the backs of everybody? But yeah, let's get it on the agenda. I haven't heard anything that I disagree with. I don't think any of us have.
Yeah.
Bonnie, do you have more to say?
No, no, that was it.
Counselor Bjornson, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you as well, Leslie, for all of that. That's fantastic. I think it's very important that we take steps to put into motion those things that you mentioned. And I was going to ask for the report as well, but Audie covered that. I agree with everybody else. I'd love to just put the stamp of approval and say, let's do it. So next agenda or whenever we can would be great. Thank.
Thank you, Counselor Bjornson. Counselor Coker?
I just wanted to say I agree with everyone else and thank you, Leslie, for all the time and effort that you put into doing that for us. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Council and Council. Thank you, Leslie. We appreciate you coming up and and well, dialing in. Dialing in and showing us the presentation as well as making the the larger report available to us. And we're happy to be your guinea pig for your project. Anytime you have another project you need a guinea pig for and we fit, we volunteer.
Well, with the language and some of the work that I've done, if if you all would like, I do have considering the outline that I've already made, if you would like me to draft some of those sections to actually come up with some code language that you all can look through and parcel out and say, no, this doesn't apply to us or oh, if we change this piece, I could do that if if that is something you're interested in.
I think that is something that we are all interested in, and if you have the time and pleasure to do that, we would be more than happy to supply you with ink, pen, paper, whatever you need.
All right. I think I just need a timeline, which I can loop back in later of just when when you'd like to see that and we'll see if I can fit it in between fighting fires this summer.
Thank you, Leslie. I appreciate it. Oh, all right, Brian. Where are we in this agenda? We, everyone, are at eight fifty-one. Is that what I'm seeing? Yes, eight fifty-one. And we have an OLCC permit and a chamber that needs to be dealt with, right?
Yeah, those are the two time sensitive, actually the fee waiver as well. So the the next three, if we could, if I could go to the OLCC permit first and then then the fee waiver and then the so let me let me drop over there. Okay, this is ten point one point three. It's a liquor license application for the Campfire Restaurant, which if you've been down fifty-eight, you know, it's a new restaurant that Marissa has opened, Marissa Lopez with her with her partner Chad Mailer. So they're seeking a brand new liquor license, OLCC, and we endorse either to recommend it be granted or recommend it be denied. Staff's recommending option one, that it be be granted. And the motions down there, you all have seen the application, I hope, that I sent out in the packet to let you know that Marissa is in the audience if you do have a question. So if you'd like to take it over.
Brian, can you flip your screen? We're looking at the chair right now.
You'll get it. Okay.
Sure, I can see the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got the screen. I'm sorry. I did the same thing earlier. Oh, that's good. Counselor Kenyon, are you about to make a motion? Because if you are, I'm going to call on you.
I move we recommend the OLC liquor license for the Campfire Restaurant to be approved.
I'll second.
And that was Counselor Spleedoff that seconded. Is there any discussion? And I see hands up and I don't know if these are old or not. So Bobby went off. Counselor Coker, did you have something? No, yes. Yes, Counselor Coker, go ahead.
No, I don't. I forgot to take it down. Sorry.
Okay. If there is no questions or discussion, Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
That's all.
Jackie, and thank you, Marissa, for putting in an application and good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck and we're all in for it. I can't wait to see what what my first alcohol beverage will be.
Thank you so much, you guys.
All right.
Okay, Brian. Next item, ten point one point four. It's a city property fee waiver request for the American Legion. As you know, on Flag Day, they the tradition is that they properly dispose of flags and last year, I believe, was done at the OIP, but they actually want to increase participation. So they're they're going to do the ceremony near the tennis courts at Greenwater. And last I talked to Skip, the commander, he said they weren't going to actually burn them there. So there's not going to be any any anything left behind and they agreed to clean it up even if there was. So he's requesting a fee waiver of twenty bucks of lost revenue on June fourteenth, Flag Day. And your choices are to approve or or deny the fee waiver or recommending to approve it.
Counselor Kenyon, I see a hand.
Yes.
Hand, go.
I move that we recommend the fee waiver for Green Waters Park Rental to conduct the National Flag Day Repairment Ceremony be approved.
This is Counselor Coker. I will second.
Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Coker. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
That's all.
Passes. And you will let the appropriate person know, right, Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know what time that is ceremony is going to be or can you let us all know ahead of time so that?
I'll send an email and put it on the calendar.
Perfect. Thank you. And let's move to the Chamber TRT request.
Yes, ma'am. Ten point one point two. Again, it's a request for TRT funding. We're looking for a motion. They have a request. I gave you the briefing sheet was attached. They do have a short presentation. I think Linda's going to give that. And I gave you some balances there on where we stand as far as what TRT funds we have and what they're requesting your choices are to approve all or some of the request or some of the requests or disapprove it altogether. We're recommending option one and the motions before you, but let's turn it over if you're amenable to Linda to give you a little explanation and kind of lessons or what they've done in the past.
Thank you very much, Brian, and good evening, everyone. I'm personally ready for this seventh inning stretch, so been a long session for you already. I'll try to condense wherever I can with what I have to say. And as Brian pointed out, you have on the screen the memo that I sent you in your packet. And I'd like to start by introducing our Board of Directors. And Brian, would you be able to help me with that?
I sure can.
Thank you.
I hope.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Kenyon, you were president of the chamber at one point, weren't you?
Yes.
Yeah, so I recognize a past board member here on the council. Thank you. And I think we have our vice president, Neemer, on the call this evening. So here we are. I just wanted you to see who we have. Jason, as I said, Vice President, Secretary Dee Sidwell, our treasurer is Melody Cornelius, McGarvin is a board member. Rusty Ackland is a board member. We have two ex officio, Mayor Holston and City Administrator Brian Kuchin. And we have one seat that is open. So if you would like to refer someone, we had been holding that for a lane electric employee and we've not been able to snag that person yet. So thank you very much, Brian. I think that's all I need there. And what I'd like to do is start to set the stage for your understanding of the chamber by telling you what our mission is. Our mission helps keep us in our lane. It's easy to find many projects across the city and in the business community to take on. But what we do is look back at our mission. Are we are we following this? And that is to promote and improve the business environment, stimulate a vibrant local economy, promote tourism and produce a cooperative effort to enhance the overall quality of life in Oak Ridge and Westford areas to their highest potential. So that being the case, the way we try to narrow down and select things to do, it can be a handful if you take on that mission all in one chunk. So what we do is see ourselves as a convener and what we do is draw together the business community. We have after hours events when we can see one another and when we can't, we have to do that online. We put on events, hold educational workshops and volunteer activities. Another thing that we do is we're a catalyst and we look for opportunities to connect our businesses so that they can thrive even more and also to provide connections with other entities that can help them. We've been doing a lot of that with our PPE distribution and letting businesses know what grants and loans are available for them. And the other thing is we serve as a champion for the business community by advocating and optimizing economic development. So we bring forth grant opportunities and try to look for ways to get exposure in the media and share our business perspective when regulations occur that may impact businesses. I'm going to skip over our membership. It's pretty stable. We're almost as we're almost doing as well as we were in two thousand nineteen, so we're really proud of that. And I think that's a result of us achieving some of our goals, which include reaching out to our members. Our executive assistant was hired in December and she's been working diligently on putting out a newsletter and also contacting people and finding out what their interests are and how we can help them. Another real highlight I want you to know about is a couple of committees. The first is the AdHoc Subcommittee that Sarah Ultimus Pope came to me and we discussed how we could work together with the Forest Collaborative and she had some time in her schedule, imagine that. And she was very helpful in expanding our capacity to reach out to other entities that want to help Oak Ridge and want to be involved. And we've had a committee of at times about fifteen people that meet online and we talk about housing, we talked about tourism, and it's a great exchange of information to keep up with what's going on in different realms. We have another committee that was very successful chaired by our vice president, Jason Neemer, and that is the Harvest Fest. We started out with the Harvest Fest thinking we'd have a fundraising event and instead with all the COVID issues that many of us stumbled on, we decided to turn it into a benefit for the community. And we appreciate the RTMP funds that made that possible. We created a an online platform so that our workshops could be viewed in the comfort of your own home. And again, this year we'll be distributing free pumpkin seeds and focusing on sustainable gardening. Many people in the community became interested in gardening during the pandemic. Um, let's see, I'm looking for ways to wrap up here and I think that leads me to our budget. So most of our expenses include doing things to our website that modernize it and bring it into the twenty-first century. And we're still working on that. We plan to release a business directory in early June and that should list all the businesses in our area. Let's see, what else do I want to tell you? Looking around the state, I noticed that many cities fund their local chambers in order to share tasks and also to be really efficient in how they serve the business community. Working together makes sense and it strengthens our community. So we ask for your consideration to fund the chamber at fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. We are scheduling a strategic planning session for July and that's our board strategic planning session to set our agenda for the next couple of years. And having a certain budget to count on gives us a better chance to achieve our goals and provide strong support to the businesses in Oak Ridge and Westford. And that concludes my pitch. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. I appreciate you coming forward and and giving us a broad overview of what the chamber is doing and why you're requesting support from the council. Council, I think I'd like to entertain questions before we look at a motion as if anyone has any. Counselor Kenyon, your your hand, is this new or old?
It's new.
Go ahead.
I'd actually like to recommend that we postpone making any decisions on this until after. I'd actually like to recommend that we postpone making any decisions on this until after the council's had an opportunity to review and revise our policy and distribution of our TRT fund.
I would say that we are not looking at revising our TRT fund. We're looking at revising our RTMP funds. And...
Mayor Holston, I disagree. I feel like we agreed last year to actually review and make a policy on TRT. We still have not done that, and we need to. There is none that exists unless you can show it to me.
TRT policy that we have had in the past. Is there any other questions that we have for Linda about this request?
No, but I do move that we postpone this discussion.
Also.
Audie, second that discussion. Bobby. Councillor Whitney, your hand is up. Go ahead.
We always receive emails from the Chamber updating us on different things that they're doing, or just FYI emails on things that impact the city. And, you know, I see no reason to do this. I think it only benefits us in the long run, and it supports partners within our community, and it allows them to do work that's really vital to our community. So I support this request.
Join in. All right, I will. I would say that this is not something that we should postpone. So we are on the motion of whether or not we should postpone, even thinking about this or not. We have had this in our packet for some time, so we've had an opportunity to look at it and review it. I would just put in my two cents, too, that the Chamber has done an outstanding job during COVID for our businesses. They continue to do it a better and better job bringing our businesses together. They act as an economic development driver in our community. They have taken it upon themselves, and they do it because they know that when they work hard, their businesses thrive, our community thrives. I think we have a pot of money in our TRT, and it behooves us to use it and use it wisely, and I think this is a very wise use of this. I think this is another example of I think this is another example of the Chamber's inability to make it, or the council's inability to make a decision. And I am saddened by this motion, but it is a motion that is on the table. Is there... Now I see hands. I see... Bobby, is this an old one? I'll come back to you.
Oh, I need to take it down, sorry.
Okay, I would come back to you. Chrissy, and then Audie.
Thank you. I do not disagree with anything. Well, I do not disagree with what you said about the Chambers. I do agree that they have really, really tremendously stepped up over the last couple of years. And I feel like I'm really happy with a lot of the things that they're doing. However, I do believe Dawn is correct, and that we did agree that we were not going to be issuing any more money out of this a while, quite a while back. And I am a little concerned since it is a large number that they're asking for, and I'm not saying that I don't want them to get that large number, or that it's unreasonable or anything like that. I just, I do feel a little concerned that we, I agree with what Tom said. We did agree that we were going to revise things, and this is a large number. My other question is, is there a time sensitivity on getting this $15,000? Is that needed by the Chambers very quickly, or is that something that they can wait a little bit on? And maybe Linda could answer that?
Well, um, it's always helpful to know what your money is and where it's coming from. And we would need to make alternate plans if we're not getting any money from the city. So all I can say is the sooner the better. We have money in our checking account, and we have money in our savings account to carry us. But we'd need to scramble and find other resources.
Yeah, and this is Jason, if you don't mind me talking super quick. Yeah, I would say just the website alone. I mean, we just don't have enough money right now to really pull the trigger on updating and upgrading our website, which is pretty crucial to be kind of staying with the times there. And a lot of people do go on Chamber of Commerce's websites to see what's going on in towns, and that would just be something that we would fall behind on, I guess.
Is that, are you done? Yes, I see your hand go down. Okay. Uh, Audie?
I'd like to find out, one, who does your website? And, two, yes, I really appreciate what the Commerce is doing and everything. But like Councillor Kenyon says and Councillor Hollitt, we've agreed to look at this, and we haven't done it. So as a council, it's shame on us. So we need to get this done first before anything's out. And you said it's not a crucial time sensitive, although you would like to know that you're getting some. It's not that we're not going to give you anything. We need to set down some rules on how it goes. So.
Excuse me. Sure, thank you. Thank you, Councillor Sledoff. To answer your question, it's Lang County Consulting does our website, and that is Amy Prince. She's worked with us for about a year and a half, or I think longer, maybe two years. And let's see, your other question was, I lost my place. I'm sorry.
No, I said we appreciate it, but I think that we do need to sit down and set some goals and regulations on how we put this out. Because we've already put this to council, and we keep dragging our feet. So as elected officials, we need to make sure that we're doing this instead of just lip service out here to our community. Because if we don't do our jobs in council, then we're failing our constituents. And that's what we need to make sure we're doing and taking care of them. So that's my reasoning.
Councillor Sledoff, I see several hands. And it's 9:13, so I would just ask that we be as brief as possible so that we can move to a vote. Councillor Coker, I will get you. Councillor Kenyon, yes?
Mayor, it's the CA. Can I have one comment, please?
Yes, please.
So my only concern here is that the speed at which this council deliberates, it could be many, many months before you get to have a consolidated and approved TRT program. And like you said, it's on the council for dragging their feet. However, we're getting ready to penalize a very vital member of our economic development community. And you're going to hurt your city more than you're going to be worried about disappointing your constituents for not doing due diligence. So I recommend that you push forward with this. There's plenty of money in the TRT account, and it's aligned with what the Chamber has been doing. So please move forward with this.
Thank you. Can I ask one question to Brian? I'm just curious, how much money is in that account?
I've got it in front of you. The bank balance is $40,823.
Oh, I apologize. I see it right there.
So I'm going to count, Councillor Coker, and then Councillor Bjornson.
I don't have a question or comment. I just want motion repeated before we vote on it, please.
I will make, I will repeat the motion before we vote on it. Yes, I will. If I can find where I wrote it down. We do that much talking? Perhaps we do. Anyway, Councillor Bjornson, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that we shouldn't penalize the Chamber of Commerce for the council's failure, although I don't think that it's bad that we like to make sure we're doing the right thing. I think we need to I think we should award the money tonight to the Chamber. I think what they do is important. But we should get on putting this on our future agenda ASAP.
All right, so Jackie, I'm sorry, Melissa, are you done?
Yes, I was.
Thank you. I apologize. Jackie, will you repeat the motion?
We move to postpone the discussion.
What we're voting on is whether or not we're going to postpone the discussion to a future date or not. We're not voting on whether this is a yes or a no to awarding this money. And with that, I see Chrissy's hand, I see Dawn's hand, and I see Bobby's hand. Chrissy, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I really do think this is a failure. I agree with what Brian said. This is a failure of council, and it would be penalizing them. So I, you know, I think we need to make sure we get this on the future agenda.
Councillor Hollitt, Councillor Whitney. Oh, I'm sorry. Are you done, Chrissy? I see your mic go up.
I'm done, sorry.
Councillor Whitney, go ahead.
I was just going to say I really appreciate Melissa's statement. I think it was very spot on, along with Brian's.
Councillor Kenyon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Linda, I just want to take this quick opportunity for you, and I know Jason's present, to let you know. For starters, thank you very much for bringing us your proposal, and I do support the Chamber, and I support everything about your proposal. And I know I can assure you for myself that when this comes before council, it's something I would support. But I just feel really strongly about council following through with with our procedures. We did agree a year ago to create a policy and procedure around this process. And we didn't know you were going to apply today, so we couldn't have I mean, you know, whenever this came to council, we should have already been on top of this. We didn't, but we also didn't know you were coming. So I'm so sorry, this I'm actually sorry for what the mayor implied earlier that I'm against this, or that I'm trying to postpone something here. It's absolutely not true. I just want to assure you that that's not my intention here. I want I want our city to be following their processes, and if we don't even have processes, we need to make them. That's just how I feel.
Are you done, Councillor Kenyon, before I move on?
Yes, I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Whitney, I see a hand. Is that old or new?
Oh, it's old.
Okay, all right. So we are making, we are voting on the motion as to whether we want to postpone this, table this until our, until we've made a decision about TRTs. And so that's what we're voting on here right now. So Jackie, will you call for a vote?
Mayor Holston?
No.
Councillor Hollitt?
She dropped out. She'll be back in a second.
Okay. Councillor Coker?
Nay.
Councillor Sledoff?
Yes.
Councillor Whitney?
Nay.
Councillor Bjornson?
Nay.
Councillor Kenyon?
Sorry, I...
Is Councillor Hollitt back?
I am. I'm sorry. And the motion is to postpone, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Nay.
Okay. That motion fails. Do I hear another motion from the floor concerning the request from the Chamber?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I move we grant the Oak Ridge-Westford Chamber of Commerce $15,360 in transient room tax funds for fiscal year 2122.
Councillor Coker, I will second.
This was made by Councillor Whitney and seconded by Councillor Coker. It's open for discussion. Let me pull my screen to watch for hands. Okay, Jackie, will you call for a vote?
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councillor Whitney?
Aye.
Councillor Coker?
Aye.
Councillor Sledoff?
Nay.
Councillor Hollitt?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Nay.
Councillor Bjornson? Councillor Bjornson?
Oh, I think we just lost her totally.
I'm back. As soon as I started hearing my name, it kicked me. Motion is aye.
That passes. Thank you, council, and thank you, Chamber, for what you're doing, and thank you for the request that you brought forward. I also want to thank Councillor Kenyon and Councillor Sledoff for keeping us on track and saying we need to follow process, and, boy, it's getting late, and policy. And let's get this on the agenda. Councillor Kenyon? Let's talk tomorrow and figure out how we get this on the agenda and where we go. I'll give you a call if you're available. Just a reminder, hold this.
Sorry, I guess I'll be working tomorrow, later in the day, after three.
Yeah, maybe I'll see you at the Firewise. Just a reminder, hope to see all of you at Firewise tomorrow. Five o'clock to seven o'clock, Green Waters. Come, and what is it we used to say, be there or be square? Hope to see you. Thank you, everybody. Brian, is there anything else that we need to do?
Public comment?
Chrissy, is there anything else we need to do, Brian, that's on this agenda that will, is really timely?
The only thing that we consider that is the RTMP allocations, which was put in a little bit late, so maybe we'll have to wait till the third.
Have to wait till the third. And if there is any public comment, please unmute yourself now and identify yourself before you launch into anything. Trudy, I see a hand. I don't see any others at this point. Go for it, Trudy.
Okay, thank you very much. Trudy Hammond, 47752 Berry Street. And this is regarding the Charter Subcommittee. And I'm thinking that as long as the minds that are interested in working on this charter, whether it be citizen, whether it be a counselor, whether it be mayor, whether it be CA, whether it be next-door neighbor, I think the most important thing for building this charter is, or changing it, is to, is to work together, no matter, no matter what our position is in the community. It's our experience and our wisdom and our knowledge and our input that we need to focus on. And I'm hoping in a collaborative approach that, that it does remain with admin. I'm excited to jump in on it. And I'm excited to try and recruit citizens to get involved. And I've really been working my tail off trying to get public safety committee members so that we can have a quorum and continue with business. But I just really believe that the expertise and the experience of individuals, no matter what role or position that they hold in the community, they're still a member of the community, still a person with input. So I'm encouraging So I'm, I'm encouraging that, that, we don't look at what role or position a person's on, but what they can contribute. Thank you.
I see Sarah's hand. Sarah, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I know it's late, and sorry, you guys, but I did have some thoughts during the charter discussion. So I think I'll share them now, just in case I don't make the next meeting. I think you guys are hitting it right on the head. It's very important. It's a citizen-led process. And so whether it's housed in the admin committee or not, I don't think is really that relevant. I think process, I mean, just to make sure it gets done, that might make sense, but it needs to be a citizen chair who runs that. And I hope you consider that you involve your counselors as an advisory capacity. So maybe they don't vote on the final product that'll go forward, but they can be there as advisory members, bringing relevant things to the table, sharing what they know about the code. But they wouldn't be the final voters. You just have those final voters be citizens. So that might be a way to be able to use all the minds that you're going to need on this process, but to kind of keep that arm's length from the council and hopefully keep the politics out of it.
Thank you for those words. I appreciate it. I don't see any other hands. Thank you, council, for enduring. I appreciate all the good discussion that we've had. Thank you, citizens, for participating and being here. And I hope you all have a good evening, and we will see you tomorrow night. Good night, everybody.
Good night.